I think we are set if PAC is ready.
Eric, you can let us know when you're good.
We are live. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. It is six oh one and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. And I will turn it to Dr. Burnham to do so.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashambo.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Lightman.
Yes.
Secretary, Ms. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Scolimbrini.
Yes.
Our student representative, Sean Delaney.
Yes.
Hi, Sean.
Hi.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
LHS History and Social Sciences Department Head, Mr. Warren Stevenson. Not sure that Warren's joined us yet. Our K eight Social Studies Coordinator, Ms. Lisa LeBlanc. And English teacher from the high school, Ms. Mary Foyle.
Yes.
And our athletic director, Mr. James Bunnell.
Yes.
And this evening, we have our school principals, Mr. Santry, Mr. Adams and Mrs. Champagne joining, as well as our Director of Teaching and Learning. They will join me in a presentation on climate culture in a little bit. I'll turn it back to you now, Mrs. Ashambo.
Alrighty. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID nineteen Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. However, this meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc. as posted on the town's website identifying on how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I am going to introduce each speaker on the agenda. When they conclude their remarks, any member of the committee is welcome to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold your your comment until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So turning to the first item on the agenda is the chair's report. And I have no report today, nothing to say. So we're going to move on to public comment. Let me just comment. I want to remind the public that the first public comment section is for agenda items only. The second public comic section is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited but to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. So do we have any public comments this evening? No, I don't see any either. Anyone on the committee wish to make a public comment? I'm not seeing that either, so we will move right along to review and approve. Whoops. Review and approve the minutes of the regular session on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion about those minutes? Then is there a motion about those minutes? Ms. Kelly?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from March sixteenth.
And is there a second? Mr. Lightman?
I'll second that motion.
And we need a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Scolimbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Lightman?
Yes.
This is Ashambo.
Yes. Next on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers. I do believe we have one. Mr. Cassidy, so nice to see you.
Thank you. Mike Cassidy, business manager, this evening, there is a ninety-six thousand dollar, excuse me, ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-dollar transfer in front of the school committee. It's it's getting too close to the end of the year. We've closed out a number of line items and done with purchasing, so we're we're allocating funding in budgets that needed to close out the end of the school year. So this evening, I'll just go briefly through the accounts that money is being transferred into. And what I try to do for the committee on this transfer, if you look into the school committee folder, is I try to separate the the to and froms into particular sections. So you get an idea of where the money's coming from, I guess. I tried to keep the facility money being transferred, coming out of the facility, other facility accounts. So I did the best job I could presenting that information. So this evening, there's a transfer of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to support the newly hired guidance counselor down at the middle, excuse me, the primary school. There's a shift of funds between the 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 day-to-day sub and long-term sub accounts that'll support the elementary school absentee, excuse me, day-to-day sub accounts. We're shifting some of the facility account salary money, surplus money into the overtime at the middle school and high school. And it's important to note that this is the the extra overtime has supported the lunchtime cleaning and sanitizing during the school day. So it's bringing extra staff to 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 make those areas and those services as sanitized as possible. The next batch of the transfer is primarily at the district level. There's an eighty-nine-hundred-dollar transfer and a seventy-six-hundred-dollar transfer. Okay, let me just address the eighty-nine. There's an eighty-nine-hundred-dollar transfer for district survey with the Climate Center. And there's a seventy-six-hundred-dollar transfer out of general supplies. And this account is a little out of whack. This is the the supply account that we've used for any COVID-related expenses. So right now, we're looking at about seventy-six-hundred dollars that we've needed to invest for COVID supplies and equipment, and that includes masks. It includes Plexiglas, additional Plexiglas purchases, mostly for lunchrooms. There's a fourteen-thousand-dollar increase for the money was encumbered for investigated and legal support that the district needs on some cases. Another twenty-five-hundred dollars in contractual services, and this is this probably should have appeared in the next section, which is technology, but it's for additional subscriptions that we need a district-wide to support our students in classrooms. And then under professional development, we needed additional money to support the divisions training that's going on for district administrators, and I believe it's with the curriculum teams. The next group is with our facility accounts. Eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars is 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 needed to support additional state inspections for our boilers and our elevators. And one thousand, sixty dollars, that account for fire and safety in furniture, that was just under budget, under budget for that amount. And then finally, the next batch is transfers is all of our IT purchases. So there's thirty-three, sixty, eight thousand and a six-thousand-dollar transfer that will support new equipment and supplies. This is basically replacement equipment for students and staff district-wide. You know, publicly, I'd like to state that the the money for for these transfers are coming out of our elementary school teacher account, which has a surplus, long-term substitute account from the primary school. The overtime for the high school is coming out of our primary school custodians due to a late-year hire in our maintenance salary account, which is some additional funds from some turnover in that account. We transferring two thousand dollars from our emergency expenditures, which is an account that we keep throughout the year. But we're so far into the year, I think we can allocate some of that money to some other areas in the budget. And then finally, we're identified additional surplus funds in our special education transportation line and our out-of-district tuition for private schools for students. Hopefully visually, you can see where some of the the money is is being allocated. This will be posted within the the shared folder for the committee to sign if it is voted on and approved this evening. So I'll turn it over to the chair for any questions regarding this transfer.
Sure thing. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy regarding these line item transfers? I am seeing, I'm seeing none. So does someone have a motion to accept these transfers as presented? Mr. Lightman?
I'll make a motion to accept the line item transfers as presented.
And Ms. Shapiro?
I'll add that motion.
And a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scolimbrini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Lightman?
Yes.
This is Ashambo.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And may I just make an announcement that on May fourth, we were scheduled to prepare a budget update. That is, that budget update will be provided to the school committee on April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
You could you expect that, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, we go to the superintendent's report.
Evening, everyone. I would like to provide you some update as to COVID numbers. The positivity rate in Lunenburg as of April first was one point three eight percent. Massachusetts is currently at two point six seven percent. Case numbers for the last several weeks, week ending March eighteenth, we had one case. Week ending March twenty-fifth, we had six cases. Week ending last week, April first, we had seven cases. And currently this week, as of today, we have six cases. Just as a little bit of an update, nurses are providing isolation and quarantine information and referring to Nishoba and/or primary care providers as needed. No contact tracing has been required since symptomatic and asymptomatic testing options are fully in place. Nurses are carefully monitoring the numbers in their buildings, looking for any concerning trends. If for any reason they are concerned about a particular area, they will contact trace, notify parent, felt with Nishoba. At this time, we are seeing no concerning trends. Cases are here and there, and it's it's looking to be household-based spread. Vaccination rates. The primary school is at forty-nine percent fully vaccinated. Turkey Hill Elementary, fifty-eight percent. The middle school at sixty-four percent and the high school at seventy-four percent. And that's that's all the COVID update I have for this evening. We do have some new grant funding that I'd like to make you aware of. We received a supply chain assistance funds grant award in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents. This is to support food service. This grant will pay for commodities only. I'd also like to let everyone know that we had a special recognition for our nurses today. Representative Kushmeric presented all of our school nurses with citations, recognizing them for all of their efforts in supporting students, staff, and families throughout these last two years. Their hard work and dedication and contact tracing in support of our local Board of Health went a long way toward keeping the entire Lunenburg community as safe and well as possible. So again, we'll offer our gratitude to our nurses. Few reminders. Today is National Paraprofessionals Day, so we'd like to thank all of our paraprofessionals for the fantastic work they do day in and day out, supporting students and teachers. April eleventh, registration for extended day and early learning center programs will open. Information will be available on that registration on our website on the morning of April eleventh. April fifteenth is the deadline for completion of the online transportation form. The link can be found on the bus information page on our website. As a reminder, April vacation is right around the corner. April eighteenth through the twenty-second is school vacation week. And I'd like to alert families to be on the watch for a family communication survey that we plan to have out the week of April twenty-fifth. And our next school committee meeting will be on April twenty-seventh via Zoom. And it's just important to remind everyone that all of our meetings through the end of the year will be held via Zoom, and we're looking at six P M. start times for those. Some administration personnel updates. Mr. John Murphy is no longer with the district. We will be posting the position of facilities director immediately. And lastly, I'd like to announce that I have asked Mr. Santry to remain in the role of Lunenburg Middle High School Principal, supported by three assistant principals. In our discussions, he conveyed that he feels that this model was successful and they did have a successful year. And he's eager to continue the good work that he started with his team and teacher leaders in both the middle and the high school. I think it's important to note that as I contemplated this change becoming permanent, I had an opportunity to hear from parents, staff, and students. I had my own experience through our leadership teamwork. And I took an opportunity to explore the impact of permanent change to the middle-high school administration model. I held Zoom forums with families, students, and staff. Family and student forums were not well-attended. However, the staff forums were well-attended. And I also had several conversations with individual staff members, small groups of staff, and received emails from staff, all of which provided feedback for consideration. I explored the implications of this change as it relates to NEAS, MIAA, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in terms of designation of our schools. First, we will be able to continue with Lunenburg Middle School and Lunenburg High School, recognized by the Department of Ed as two separate schools, and they will be reported. MCAS data, district profile, report cards, etc., as two separate schools. Secondly, MIAA establishes the rules for eligibility to participate in high school athletics. However, as was done this school year, the school committee can impose further restrictions on eligibility for participation. Lastly, grades six through eight would participate in the next NEAS review. This is the only change resulting from this new administrative structure. So all of our current practices, past practices would remain the same with this one exception. Having additional grades participate in this review process will be beneficial. I know that the middle school staff may feel a bit overwhelmed at the thought of a NEAS review. I think most high school teachers also feel overwhelmed when it's that time again. But we now have a Director of Teaching and Learning, and we have curriculum coordinators who will be able to guide and assist all of our staff through this next review process, which is eight years away. We have time to prepare. Teachers and parents alike express their concern that while Mr. Santry has demonstrated the ability to lead as the principal of the entire middle-high school, the concern was there that it might be too big a job for one person. As the schools will continue to be designated as two schools co-located, there does remain an opportunity to return to a two-principal model in the future if it's deemed that that is beneficial. Teachers also provided feedback on other matters. An example, there was conversation around the challenges of the current school schedule. And we talked about how those challenges can be addressed through ongoing dialogue with both the middle and the high school faculty. And there's a possibility that we could look to form a scheduling committee to further explore options in that regard. But I feel very comfortable that, having looked into things and having heard from many people, that we did have a successful year in this model with the leaders that are in place at the middle-high school. And I I have no concerns with continuing with that model. And Mr. Santry assures me that he feels he has a strong team in place to be successful. So I hope that you will join me in congratulating Mr. Santry on this permanent appointment as the principal of Lunenburg Middle High School. A message, a message will go out to all families and staff this evening, making the same announcement. And that's all I have.
All right. Well, congratulations, Mr. Santry. That's a big job.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Burnham, for this opportunity, really. And for the trust given still to me, and I take it very seriously, and I am looking forward to moving both of these buildings forward in the next few years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is our student representative, Sean.
Thank you. As always, I'll start with the high school report. Prom committee has been selling prom tickets after school throughout all of March. The student council, along with the best buddies, participated in the pull or plunge at Lake Whalen on the sixteenth. The senior class held a dodgeball tournament on March eighteenth. Sophomores had English MCAS testing on the week of the twenty-first. Seniors have started their countdown, and as of today, only have twenty-seven days left of school. Onto the middle school. Quarter three ended on April first, and students are now in the final quarter of the school year. Eighth grader Katie Dakin was nominated by the school's administration as this year's Lunenburg Project three, three fifty-one ambassador. She is focusing on the nonprofit Cradles to Crans. The middle school science Olympiad team finished in third place in the in the state at this year's competition. And lastly, is Turkey Hill. Students in all grades had English MCAS testing the week of the twenty-ninth. The spring session of the after-school music program started on the twenty-ninth. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda is introduction to law.
This is where I invite Mrs. LeBlanc to to provide a little update for you on this brand-new course this year. And I have to say, I've been aware of all the different guests that have come to the class, actually participated and attended a class. It's 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 really been, I think, a great addition to to the course offering at the high school. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. LeBlanc. And you should have the capacity to screen share your slides, or you can, I can do them for you.
That's fine, I think. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thanks. I will. Oh, yeah, no, hold on. I want to make sure I don't show my grades, which would be a real Oh, man, okay. You know, it's the end of the term, everyone. That works better. Okay. So yes, this is, this has been a little bit of a brainchild that we've had for a couple of years, even going back before Dr. Burnham was with us. When we had superintendent comms, we would talk about the mock trial program that we had and the extensive work that the students were doing, like the high-level learning that was happening, and we felt like it needed to be a course. And it doesn't necessarily work that mock trial students take the Intro to Law course, or Intro to Law students need to take the mock trial course, but it is like an area of interest for a lot of students. And they are able to make connections between both of them. So there are, you know, a couple of things that that were the aim of the class when we started it, that it's a semester class. It's run as an elective for the History Social Science Department. And it's typically, I mean, we did it once, but it will typically be juniors and seniors because our freshmen and sophomores have a required history courses that they need to take. So there was a sophomore in the first section. She is interested in a history path. So she chose extra history electives. For next year, we have over twenty students enrolled. So it will run as one semester, the fall semester again. And we'll see, hopefully, we can continue to drum up some interest in the following years. We focus on legal understanding, especially new vocabulary. There are so many words that the students don't understand that have to do with law. And they're the same words that often adults don't understand when they have to do with law. So that's been really, that's been really fun to kind of pick out the words that I might be comfortable with and and remember. We did a lot of having conversations and then stopping and be like, raise your hand if you heard a word that you don't know. And then we would identify that it needed to be a vocabulary word. We incorporate knowledge, general knowledge on government, which as a civics teacher, that's something that's easy to see the crossover between my two courses. And then we definitely incorporate mock trial into the process, the case, the case law, the process. The process, that's a big part, the process of, um, civil or criminal trials. The real world application was the part I was most excited about. Um, it's, it's like we said when we started the course to students, it's not about, you know. Legal trouble that you might get in, it's actually about all the interactions with law. That you don't understand you're going to get into when you go to college, when you. You apply for financial aid, you are signing a contract, what does that mean? What are you held accountable for? They are getting their licenses or have their licenses. They are making, they are setting up bank accounts, they are doing all sorts of stuff. Um, that has them interacting with the law. Um, all sorts of things, even personal. Uh, things that I know that the students are going through connections that they can make that happen in class that are law related. Uh, and then exploration was something else, uh, driving force in this class. There are so many different avenues that you can take, um, with a law degree. Or just with an interest in law and students. Originally came in thinking that you needed to be a lawyer, but it, it's not, that's not really the only path and you certainly don't need to be a criminal attorney. There are so many different things that you can do. Um, a- and they seemed really interested in that. This was just, um, kind of a slide showing how we started our unit, um, talking about law basics. These students, juniors and seniors did not get civics as a full year course. So it was important for me to recognize they actually didn't have as much government background as the. Next years of students will. Um, so that was kind of filling in some of the missing information. Here are the general topics we covered, um, lawmaking at the federal and state level. They got a kick out of looking through Massachusetts general laws, the website's actually pretty easy to navigate. And finding some obscure laws on the books, they enjoyed that very much, we looked at, um. Settling disputes and that's actually when Dr. Burnham joined us. When I talk about our guest speakers, uh, we were so fortunate to have, um, the school's attorney, Melissa Murray. Um, who town council, she came and joined us and then Kate joined us. And then the three of us were able to talk about some of the positive ways we settle disputes. Through negotiation and negotiation strategies and, um. It, that was like, I, it was a really cool crossover, kind of bringing all the worlds together. So we cover, you know, the court system, the difference between civil and criminal law, um. They are high school students, the, if I could only teach them about criminal law, they would be thrilled. They, they want to talk about crimes, like all the time, especially. The big ones, so, uh, we did focus on that, I wanted them to drive. What we were doing with the course and, uh, they were super interested in that. I know that Mr. Scullumbrini. Is, is interested maybe in connecting with us, um, next year. And, uh, I, I'm looking forward to growing our guest speakers list as well. So th- those are just the list of things that we kind of covered, um. This was just a, uh, one of the strategies we were using was scenarios, very important. Sometimes we use real cases, definitely, um, the kids were interested in that, but we tried to look at scenarios. What would you do? What's the moral issue? What's the legal issue? Where would we go to find this? Um, we really dove into, um, the OJ Simpson trial for all of us who are above the age of eighteen. We, you know, I guess maybe even older. Uh, they, they don't know, they had no idea all the things that I thought they would remember. So we looked at this with fresh eyes in a sense, which was so cool, um, because. The OJ Simpson trial covers so much law in so many different areas. Um, jury selection, use of evidence, um. Fame, fortune, um, systemic racism, we looked back at, um. But what was happening in the culture, what was happening in California at the time, we were able to really. Go in some cool avenues with the kids kind of leading the way about what they wanted to talk about and, um. This was a, a primary focus for us, it, it helped us, um, pick some, some projects to focus on, so we created. Um. Here, this one infamous trials, we created a project called. An infamous trial project where they needed to pick an infamous civil or criminal trial that happened in the United States. They needed to do a whole host of things. Um, they needed to look at jury selection and they needed to talk about. Um, the cases, the, the main points that both sides made, they needed to make a timeline of the events. And then a timeline of the trial, discuss the verdict. Um, they were great and I, I definitely learned. Um, and I'm sure I went to Mr. Santri on this to just. Getting used to juniors and seniors and understanding that I needed to sometimes say like. I know you want to show pictures of, of things that are, um. You know, some horrific things, we just need to figure out what the high school appropriate boundaries of some of that is. And also the triggering events and trauma, a- and so. We did bring some of the mental health component into this, like what issues were you comfortable talking about? Is someone presenting on a topic that is sensitive to you and is there an opportunity for you to exit the room? So you, you don't need to hear about some of these specifics, so. For me, working with juniors and seniors was new and, um, there are fewer boundaries, but there still are boundaries, so. You're working on that part, just a couple of other things, we, um, for a civil case, we looked at a civil action. Using some of the, the book and then, um, the information from the. Uh, event itself and then also the trial and the movie, the kids really enjoyed that, they also. Did not grow up knowing about that, so it was pretty much a new thing for them. We, um, we watched some Judge Judy and we analyzed some small claims court and they. Really thought that was fascinating, um, looking at the different ways, uh, small claims works, which is. Hopefully, if you're going to end up in court, the court you end up in and not, not a bigger one. Um, so we were just trying to find some things high school kids would be interested in, they did a law teaching project at the end. Where they needed to pick any part of the law that we didn't get to and presented to somebody else, I had fantastic presentations. Um, one student did one on juvenile justice a- and, um. We had another presentation on divorce in different states and what, uh, the laws around divorce look like in different states and. Um, it was just great, and then the, the last thing I'll say is that we did. Um, a criminal justice reflection, we looked at the Innocence Project, which helps support, um. And investigate wrongful convictions in the country and then, um. Having the students analyze some things that they learned. Um, what are some takeaways? How can they, even if they don't go into law? Um, you know, uh, look at that and, um. And be mindful of conversations about that involve, um, criminal justice reform. So the, um, yes, speakers, so great, um. Jennifer Flanagan, former state senator came, um, she talked to the kids about her time on the Cannabis Commission. Um, which was great, she also talked to us about making laws. As, um, went for all of her time in the State House, Melissa Murray joined us, Officer McNair joined us. Um, Attorney Matt Gilman, who has an office in Lunenburg, he talked to the kids a lot about, he specializes in. Um, licenses, licenses and traffic infractions and, um. He gave the kids a lot of good advice, I, I know they're driving, it makes me concerned, so he. He, you know, told them the do's and don'ts, um. And, uh, Attorney Tom Pierce, who's a public defender in Essex County, totally different kind of talking to us about. Um, defending those who have no money, um, who are, um, you know, accused of crimes and. And are looking for some support and he talked to us about the struggles and the benefits of working in that type of law. We had so many other attorneys, um, I think I saw Mr. Franco on here earlier too. He offered to join us and, um, I've spent, uh, Mr. Scullumbrini. Offered and next year we just need to pace out, um, how I'm going to do it and how I'm going to fit everybody in. So these are just some student survey responses, uh, it was, I still am figuring out. How much work for an elective is the right amount of work, that's something I've talked to Mr. Santri about, I talked to the history department about that. Um, that, that's just like something to navigate. Um, the content can be challenging, I do need the workload and the, the work to ma- to match that in a way. Uh, kids liked the mock trial stuff. Um, some of them wanted it to be a little bit more structured, it probably that. Idea that we were searching this out together and finding out what we wanted to spend time with. That might become a little bit more structured in the future, so I'm happy to take, um, any questions, I. I think I told Mr. Santri the other day, it's just so fun to like. Come to work and love what you teach every day. And it's, it's really exciting, I'm really thankful for the opportunity to have teachers. In departments come up with new ideas for content that we think kids in Lunenburg would benefit from. And that the district is willing to support us in providing new opportunities.
Um, Mrs. LeBlanc, I think I want to take that course. Um, it, it's absolutely engaging and I think. The students are just so fortunate to have the opportunity to work with you on this topic. Um, is there anyone on the committee that would like to make a comment? Mr. Layton.
Thanks, I would agree with Carol, it does sound very engaging, um, and I like what you said about the course, it's a first year course, so you. Don't be afraid to keep tweaking it and adjusting it and making it better. Uh, one idea I had was just like the civil service idea of it, like does it prepare them to. Essentially take the test and also even getting firefighters maybe to come to as a speaker as well as an option. I thought of that as well, but I love the idea of the course.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for that.
Anyone else? I am not seeing anyone else, so thank you very much, Mrs. LeBlanc, that was terrific. Um, moving on, we have a school climate overview.
So this evening, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on the work we've been doing. Um, relative to, uh, the strategy on cultivating climate and culture. Take a moment here to. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So along the way through these slides, um, Mrs. Scott will, will join me as well as the, um. The principals, as we move through and discuss all of the information to share this evening. So, we've been working to gather data this year through conducting climate surveys. SWAT analysis and, uh, some work on relationship mapping. So first we'll talk about the climate survey results, we'll, we'll get a bit of an overview. So we partnered, um. With the, um, National School Climate Center. And, uh, we administered their comprehensive school climate inventory. Just so that we all understand what we're talking about when we say school climate, um, school climate. Is the quality and character of school life. School climate is based on patterns of students, parents and school personnel's experience of school life. It also reflects norms, goals, values into personal relationships, teaching and learning practices and organizational structure. And, um, a positive school climate fosters youth development and learning. That supports those positive life outcomes for our students. When we talk about school climate improvement, we're, we're engaging in a cyclical. Um, exercise and the actual administration, um, of. The, the surveys puts us in this stage two portion. Um, where we've gathered that data, uh, and we're looking now to interpret. The results, from there, we go into action planning, implementing our action plan, reevaluating. And then coming back around, um, to, to perhaps having to gather some additional data. So again, um, the inventory, um, uh, was, uh, presented. To the students, the school personnel and to families, there are three different surveys, uh, that were. Um, administered. And looking at this, it, it really does provide an in-depth profile of the school community, um, in particular areas. And it does take a look at the multi-dimensional, um. Components of, of a school climate. Um, and it helps us to understand how each of these groups. Parents, students and staff, uh, perceive the school environment. So this just sort of gives you the, the deeper dive into what these dimensions of school climate. Uh, look like, so there's a category of safety, teaching and learning, interpersonal relationships. The institutional environment, social media, and then there are some components that are specific to staff. So I'll, I'll have, um. Mrs. Scott join me here in these next few slides, this is an overview of, uh, the participation. Uh, in the survey, the number, the percentage of folks that completed the survey in each category. At each school.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. You want me to take over from you?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, this particular set of data shows that, um, mostly the. The combined district point scales and, um, there are several slides that also break it out per building. Each principal has access to their own building scores, so they could take a, a deeper dive and they're going to talk about that a little later. Um, something important here is that they consider individual dimension scores below two point five to be negative. And any scores above three point five positive, scores between two point five and three point five are neutral. So by, um. Separated out by elementary student, middle high school student, our school personnel and then families. You can see that, um, we had positive scores. In general, and then, um, the, the scores that were in darker blue are those considered to be neutral. Um. We did not ask the elementary students about social inclusion, which is why that's missing. Some of the, um, highlights are that elementary students are more positive across the dimensions than middle high school students. That is not something that was unexpected, um, because perceptions are higher in elementary school and generally, generally decline as students get older. Um, due to many factors, including grades, greater need for social acceptance and a stronger focus on academic need. Some of the other highlights, um, safety rules and norms receive the highest score across all populations with the exceptions of parents and guardians. Um, you can see that the breakdown here with elementary, middle, high school students, school personnel and family. The sense of social emotional security and social media were in the neutral range for all populations with the exception of elementary school students. And social and civic learning, um, in the positive range for all populations within the, with the exception of middle and high school students are some of the other highlights. And social and civic learning, um, in the positive range for all populations within the, with the exception of middle and high school students are some of the other highlights. This slide shows, um, the overall score for so middle, high school students would be the lighter orange, elementary students, school personnel and family. But all in the positive range across the board. And then this is a breakdown by school and like I said, the principals have spent some time um, really looking into the, their own data and the dimensions of each. These are also the overall scores from each school, um, for students, personnel and families. And here, um, Lunenburg Primary School Personnel and Families have the highest overall scores. All populations with the exception of students at Lunenburg High School are in the positive range. This breaks down just the high school from the middle school since high school, middle school were combined on the previous slide and then Turkey Hill separate for student scores across schools. And we did have, as you saw on one of the earlier slides, a really good turnout of student responses. Though our staff and, and, um, staff responses weren't as, as high in family responses, the lowest across the board. Some of the other highlights of that slide are that, um, with middle and high school students in the neutral range for sense of social emotional security. Again, safety rules and norms highest across the board. Social support adults and social support students are all in the positive range there. Which is a clear indication that students feel like they have supportive relationships with staff members and their peers there.
My usual have to pause on my screen share because my advanced is not working at the moment.
As you saw in kind of the cycle, we're in the evaluation and then, um, they give us some app, action steps and planning tools. And one of the, the steps they want us to take is to take a, a close look at making meaning. Um, I think I'm going to turn it over to the principals here to talk about their individual making meaning for these scores.
Thank you, Erica. Chad Adams, primary school principal. The biggest theme, uh, for staff that stood out fell into the, the leadership category. Um, and that dealt with, um, open and community, open communication, accessible, um, accessible administration. Um, there's some of the, the key components that came up from that. I, it, it's, it's a little, it's a little strange. Um, if you go back and look at the positivity rate from, from the staff in the school. So as part of, as part of some conversations that will be ongoing, um, in the, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be looking at, um, the, the leadership, uh, qualities of that leadership, but what specifically are people, um, concerned about? Or what, what, what caused the, the ratings to be that way? You know, what, what, what are we? What are we missing as administrators in the building, um, that we can do better, um, to, to make people feel, um, that leadership is, is, is a little bit, uh, little more solid than, than what's showing up in the scores for leadership. Um, it really wasn't low, but it was the next lowest. Um, one of the next lowest, um, items for us. You know, again, I, it confirms what I already know. I mean, there, there are conversa- there's been conversations in the building, um, with individual teachers and grade levels. You know, um, s- some of it really talks about, uh, communicate, some of the, some of the leadership piece speaks to communication. Um, and we've had those discussions. Um, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. Um, overall for our parents and our teachers, um, the, the social emotional security and physical safety in the building was the highest, highest rated, um, areas. Um, which is really, which is really um, uplifting for us. Um, we spent, we try to spend a lot of time, um, working with our youngest population on, on teaching, um, you know, rules, procedures, processes, um, you know, that, that ensures safety number one and, and it make it a safe environment. Number two for the kids, um, so that they all feel that they're welcome and, and they're not, um, they're not concerned about going to school. Not perfect by any means. Um, um, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we really work hard at it and, and I'm glad that, um, the, uh, survey showed that some of that's coming through. Um, again, potential areas to improve, the, the leadership piece, I'm going to wrap back around with, um, communication. The, um, when we originally looked at the data, social media came up for the primary school and, and I had to look at that a couple of times. Um, what does that mean? Um, and, and that question for us really dealt with, um, or that question really dealt with, uh, student use of social media and, um, um, cyber bullying and, and those types of, those types of issues. You know, whereas I was thinking it was more along the lines of like our use of social media, which I also know we need to work on based on conversations with the SAC about the, my, my, uh, school advisory council with the data. So I mean, that's definitely an area that we, we, we can improve on, um, as far as, uh, social media communications too. So obviously our PBIS that we've, we've tried to put in place, um, the SEO classes that we have in place. The fact that we have, um, check-ins and check-outs informally at this point in our building with, with some students um, who may have struggles during the day. I think these are all, um, really point to, to, you know, showing that, that these are, these are the things that we're doing that to have those score, the, the influence of scores. And I think it's really, you know, I'm really happy that it, it did show up. Again, questions of the data, the data raised, you know, again, it goes back to that leadership and communication piece for me and, um, and I won't get too far into it, but it's similar to what I had, um, in some, um, my SWOT analysis, which I'll talk about a little, in a little more detail. Um, a little bit later on, but.
Thanks, Mr. Adams. Next up is the Champagne.
Good evening, everyone. Heidi Champagne, Turkey Hill Elementary School. Thank you for having me. Um, in our climate and culture survey, I was fortunate to be able to process through it a little bit with my school advisory council. Um, one of the things we noticed is that in terms of participation rates, the parent rate was particularly low at 18%. The staff late, uh, the staff participation rate was at about a 35%. Um, but the student rate was happily at 82% rate. And we, we tried to talk about even what, what that meant and how that impacted the way that we should look at the results. Um, so I, for, for us, um, one of the things that stands out is in terms of, um, the student responses. Um, both a strength and an area of focus was safety, right? So, um, feeling that the school clearly communicates rules about uh, teasing, uh, and violence and we have clear and consistent norms in enforcement with adult intervention. The students gave us a very high rating on that. Um, but just as Mr. Adams mentioned, and actually that surprised me a little that it reached down to the primary school as well. An area of focus is social media. Um, but, ooh, 100%, we have been experiencing that more and more. Um, this spring is student use of texting or, um, other s- uh, social media apps where they can communicate with each other after school hours. But how what is said in those circumstances, um, comes into school with their feeling then of, of, of not feeling safe or not wanting to come to school because of what was said outside of school. So, um, I, I think that, that jumps into, um, uh, how does this data relate to, to efforts within your school? I think that's really an area that we need to focus on is, um, training, education for both students and parents about, um, those, the implications of using social media at such a young age. And our concerns about that. So let's see, uh, in terms of confirming what we already know, um, staff and students both talked about, uh, as an area of strength, social support um, for students, uh, caring relationships for students with adults and including high expectations for students and, uh, adults willingness to listen to students and get to know them as individuals. Um, so that was, that was happy that students feel supported um, by their teachers here in this area and that, uh, the teachers, um, certainly expressed the, a strength of relationships between them on their teams, um, uh, with their paras uh, amongst the adults in the building. So that, that's happy news. Let's see. Questions the data raises, I think, um, one of the areas of weakness that, uh, just like Mr. Adams mentioned, um, was under leadership and so it really raises questions for, uh, oh, what do I need to improve on that? And I talked a little bit with the SAC about that. Is it having a greater clarity of vision and being able to communicate that successfully? Um, or, or, or what else is it? And so, um, that certainly does raise some important questions because I read over and over again how important, um, a, a, a healthy leadership is to the climate and culture of a building and how it affects every outcome. And so I'm, I'm certainly look forward to examining that more closely. Strengths, potential areas. How does the data relate to other efforts within our school? I think it reinforces, um, again, I'm going to quote Mr. Adams as, uh, the use of the SEL special and hiring that, um, that guidance counselor who offers the SEL down at the primary school and at our school. Um, now for all of our students using the Trails to Wellness program, I think that's, that just reinforces the need for that. And, um, and, and as I mentioned, suggests the, um, really as an area of focus to look for ways that we can, um, provide some further education for children and opportunities for parents in terms of the social media.
Thank you, Mrs. Champagne.
Sure, thank you.
Turn it over to Mr. Santry.
Good evening, Tim Santry, uh, Principal Lunenburg Middle High School. I like how that sounds. That's the first time I think I said that. So, um, really what stands out, um, there's two things that really stand out, not just in my, in, uh, middle, high school data, but maybe in the district data. And Annika or Dr. Burnham, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I think the strongest scores district wide were the safety and security of our learning environments. And I think ever since I've been a principal is that we've always said that we, that's our major focus is to create an environment where kids feel safe to learn and grow. And, and if you have that foundation, if you have created that work, um, we can build upon the other scores that may need improvement. Um, another thing that stuck out to me, uh, district wide is that I, I, I don't believe we had a score that fell within the negative range. We had some that fell within that neutral range, which means there is room for improvement, but we had no glaring score of something that was, uh, that needed to be addressed, uh, quickly in a, in a, in a quick manner. So those are all positive things. You know, uh, one of our scores that we need to improve upon and I, and it, it kind of makes sense is that social and civic learning and with students, um, having an interrupted, uh, in-person learning for 20 months, it might stand to reason that their social learning might have suffered. And I, I think that the district and our schools have done a good job, as we have talked about with the Trails to Wellness and our, and our positions that we have placed into, uh, support students in those areas. I think, uh, that's important to continue as we move forward. Uh, and, and Chad spoke about it, uh, the Champagne spoke about it. It's that social media piece. I was talking to the middle school leadership team today and, um, it is just, we, we asked students for, uh, 22 months to communicate in only one way and that was through a phone or a Chromebook or on an app or by texting. And then we invited them back into school and decided we were going to tell them that's not the way they can communicate anymore for six hours a day. So I would imagine that social media piece are feeling safe around that, uh, is, is some place that we can improve. It just, it relates to the efforts, I think, uh, that Dr. Burnham, uh, has done a outstanding job of kind of putting uh, the positions into place that we were going to need when we came back in August with our guidance counselors and our social workers and our increased, uh, administrators. We, we knew that there was going to be a social emotional impact. What I look forward to and maybe the data is going to be able to show this is to eventually move from, uh, a triage um, piece of social emotional work, which it seems we're doing now into that, uh, more of an educational stance, where we'll be able to kind of educate around social emotional issues. But we've got to take things one step at a time and, and treat kids for where they are in our building, but um, I think that's, uh, that's how we could move forward.
Anything else, Mr. Santry?
I think that's all for right now. So any questions?
All right, so we'll move on to the next section. Little bit of discussion on a SWOT analysis that was done in each school. So what is a SWOT analysis? Uh, when we say that, we're, we're talking about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, but I, I think that we like to reframe the threats as barriers, potential barriers. Um, this analysis is a tool, uh, that can be used to gather perspectives and data on internal and external factors and perceptions, uh, so that we can be aware of those things as an organization as we're planning, uh, for, for future initiatives or growth for the, for the district or the school. So why do we have, you know, our schools participate in this? Again, we're, we're focused on working on school climate and culture. Um, this is a great tool to gather perspectives. Um, and this information is going to be used along with the results of those climate surveys that we just reviewed, um, to help us develop, uh, district and school, um, plans and goals. Um, and likely, um, find its way into, um, action plans as part of the strategy for continuous improvement as well. So a little bit about the themes that, uh, emerged in, in each of our schools. So we'll turn it back over to, um, Mr. Adams to talk a little bit about the things that came through, uh, when he did this exercise with his staff at the primary school.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, we, we had the staff complete this, um, as grade level groups, um, complete the survey. Um, and it was basically asking about what are the strengths um, of the school, um, culture, one of the strengths of the school programming. Same thing for weaknesses, opportunities, threats and barriers. Um, we took, took all that data, put it into a chart. Put it into a chart. And then gave each one of the individual responses we received. A category, we tried to make it a broader category so we could try to find find the trends. Now, these what you see before you. These were the major, these were the major trends that came out from analyzing the data. There were some others, but these were the ones that were the the with the highest responses. The there were some singletons, there was a lot of COVID-related. Concerns as far as weaknesses and threats, the barriers and things like that. So, you know, we'll we'll address those with the staff in some upcoming meetings. One of the greatest strengths in my building, it always has been ever since I've been there, is 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 the staff collaboration, the staff support, the staff. Cooperation. It's a really strong feeling in my building. Anybody who's worked in my building or been in my building knows that it's there. And and it is true, they're they're they will work with each other, they will support each other. You know, they'll help each other through 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 daily things at school and and also provide some additional supports to people who need it. For things outside of school, so it's it's a really. It's a really tight-knit community, it really is. So that's one of the greatest strengths and 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 I feel like we can we can build off of that. But we gotta get to the communication piece first, so as you can see. Opportunities, communication, weaknesses, communication, threats and barriers, communication, all similar to. Well, points back for me to the leadership piece from the climate survey. A lot of a lot of the scores or a lot of the questions dealt with a communication piece for leadership. So so. We have, we have our goal. At the primary school, we have a goal, we have some some idea of what direction we need to move in. The opportunities, communication, the common, the CPT is a common planning time. I think a lot of what staff is looking for as far as communication is the opportunity to communicate with each other. Right now, we're we're working on piloting curriculums and we we we're working on selecting curriculums. So a lot of that common planning time. Is that's what it's being used for and PD in the curriculums that we're already using at the beginning of the year, so. We really didn't have the opportunity to use that to its fullest potential. And actually, you know, I told my staff probably back in December, common planning time is is actually it's really a misnomer for us right now, it's really. Professional learning community at this point. So we we have an opportunity, we're looking at scheduling next year to try to. Try to build in a little bit more of that common planning, common planning time, the way. That staff has expressed concerns around it. And we would definitely be looking at that as we move forward. Weaknesses, communication, decisions and processes. And I'm just gonna go to threats and barriers to decisions and process because it's the same, it's the same thing. You know. We looked at this and. The the first question I asked, Kevin White, my assistant principal, was like, what are we missing communication wise? You know, we have our, we have our guesses. You know, as far as as what what where this came from. You know, but until we go back and meet with each individual grade level and ask some. Some clarifying questions and give them another opportunity to talk about specifically what we're missing for the communication piece, whether it be. Decisions or processes or decisions. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to verify what I what I think it is. You know, a lot of, a lot of the decisions and process, a lot of the processes have changed this year. It's not that we didn't have them before, we've had a lot of the processes we have in place. But we've definitely. We streamlined them or we tweaked them to make them more efficient and and any change with all the changes that we've had this year for us. I I think that is where a lot of this concern from staff has come from. But again, until until I go back and we actually have those individual or grade level conversations with people. We won't know for sure, but given given some of the individual conversations I've had with staff, I'm I. I think I think we're, I think we're pretty right, you know, I think we have it. Have it right, it's going to be about processes and things like that. And decision making, there are many opportunities in the building for staff. To contribute and provide feedback and provide input and help make decisions. From the BHST, the TST. The TST groups that we, the TST committee we have, the. The BILT, the Building Instructional Leadership Team. So, you know, we, I'm wondering, again, what are we missing, what's the disconnect? There is a lot, you know, Kevin and I, we have a, we have a regular check-in, we send out to staffs. So they could fill out a Google spreadsheet and it pops up with an email and says, I need to check in with you. You know, our doors are open all the time. You know, so so we need to go back and circle back with staff and figure out what the disconnect is between for the communications pieces, so. And before I, before any of this goes into like Dr. Burnham was talking about, before any of these. Before we develop any action steps around this and, you know, we need to do that, that investiga- investigatory work for finding out what really is. The root root issue, root cause, before I put them into a goal in my school improvement plan or even action steps. Under one of the existing goals.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Welcome.
This is Champagne.
So my esteemed middle high school colleague has admonished me twice in the last ten minutes to. Make sure not to ramble, so let me see how succinct I can be here. Our staff considers their rapport with each other and their capacity to work together. As the number one strength in our school, I certainly agree. They, in terms of weaknesses, they see. A lack of consistent communication as a concern. The older building, right, we were built in nineteen sixty-nine and so we have shortcomings that our other buildings do not. As being an area of weakness and the subsituation, especially in the COVID years. Our biggest opportunities lie in the. Super exciting potential of a new reading and math curriculum spearheaded by our our lovely curriculum director and literacy. We just think that's a wonderful opportunity for us to have our our curriculum consistent, unified across K to five. And our our. Threats or barriers. Funding, it it, you know, funding can be relatively uneven, some years it seems to be wonderful and in other years. It seems to be more of a challenge. And I'm sorry, Dr. Burnham, I'm not sure if there's anything below funding, I can't see anything, oh, there we go, and the possibility of. Of burnout or low morale, the COVID years have been very, very, very difficult. It's, I I I think it's difficult to to overstate that and have caused real challenges for some of our staff, so. Those were the perceived threats.
Thank you, Mrs. Champagne. Mr. Santry.
So, yeah, and Miss Champagne, you're not supposed to pull back the curtain and let people know what's going behind the scenes, but thank you for that shout out. Lunenburg Middle School has our SWOT analysis, we are going to complete that in May. So we have kind of two different formats, so for the middle school, we're gonna do ours in May and then again in October. We're gonna compare strengths and weaknesses and see if they would have improved or continue to need improvement in any in any way, but we have not done our SWOT analysis. For the middle school so far, but I do believe Dr. Burnham has penciled me in for June. To report out on that first SWOT analysis that we're going to do in May. We were able to do the analysis at the high school. I believe this was our first. Full faculty activity. At the high school, which, you know, Mr. Miku and Mr. Duffy helped me set up and I I thought went rather well, we broke. Our the faculty into smaller groups that weren't in departments, so maybe we could get a little bit different of perspective. And we did it as like a carousel where smaller groups would be writing. Different pieces around. Instruction and around culture, what we felt those strengths and weaknesses are. And I I believe as the strengths were at the primary school and the elementary school. Strengths listed are our our fantastic faculty and our students and how both of those groups are dedicated. Strong teacher relationships with high standards and rigorous curriculum. Some groups noticed that we had an increase in support for staff and students and an increased use in technology. And listed as a strength, the the access to club sports and and activities. Some of the weaknesses that that our faculty had pointed out are things that we've been talking throughout the year to school committee as well. As in my school advisory council and in our leadership and department head teams is that. Our struggle to support students once they enter that tier-two. Stage of support in which we have taken action and hopefully we'll have an interventionist. To support those students where we've been struggling to provide that support, some teachers. Some faculty listed out rigidity, inability to be flexible is one of our weaknesses. Content professional development that, you know, that that that's a very difficult piece to to provide. Like I said, this was at the beginning of a fourth surge of coronavirus, so. People were on edge and they were concerned about teacher isolation, student disengagement and another. Area of weakness that was identified by our faculty was some of our class sizes, which are probably the largest they have been at the high school in many years. Some classes in our foreign language wing up to thirty and then other classes in our history in the LA classes as high as twenty-seven. So those are larger numbers than they are usually accustomed to at the high school. The opportunities that were listed right, that we're a small, tight-knit community that cares for each other and. And a willingness to to help each other get through. With the new resources that the district has provided us, we have opportunities with that technology piece. We have new electives. And they, this has been mentioned several times, so I did wanna list it down is. They feel that if we had an opportunity for a late bus. For students, both for extracurricular activities as well as extra help. That would be an opportunity for students and the building to move forward. And some of our threats were ones that I I'm wondering if were associated with our fourth surge or are. A product of the pandemic or are they systemic problems at the high school that we need to address, so. As we did this SWOT and I believe it was October. I would like to do this again in May and then we have a cross-reference to see. If we still have similar answers. I did, the best laid plan sometimes. Aren't achieved, I wanted to get our faculty back together and discuss. Those the similarities of this SWOT, but I I think. Completing another one and and then bringing out the actual carousel paper. That we did in October and just kind of compare those and see what similarities we have, but. Those threats were. The the mental health piece, the social media. Of course, in a pandemic, the increase in absences as we were asking students to stay home if they're sick. Students not feeling like they fit in, so would really like to do a deep dive on that and work with our faculty around that piece. And that that student apathy is. Sometimes. Teachers struggle with student participation and on. Doesn't seem to be a product of their ability or their mental health or why isn't a student succeeding, so we're we're working on strategies to provide teachers. To help those students that are presenting as apathetic. And then just the college pressure and the other pressure that high school students. Face every day trying to work with an extremely talented faculty and asking them to be. You know, put more tools in their toolbox to help some of our students succeed, so. That's what came out of our SWOT analysis, I'm interested in in a follow-up one to report back to you what the similarities and differences were.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we'll talk a little bit about relationship mapping. So this exercise is where initially this first. Activity is with the staff. And trying to identify. Students that staff members have. A connection with, something more than just. Oh, this is a student in my class. Something a little bit deeper than that. So in each building, we've been working on doing this activity with with our staff as well, so. Mr. Adams, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about your experience with this and what your next steps are.
Thank you, like Dr. Burnham said, we we. Did a presentation to staff at a faculty meeting about relationship mapping, provided an overview of what it was. And how how it would help us, possibly help our students, right, that's our, that's our long-term goal. So we completed. The staff identification of connections, so basically we listed all the kids in the each homeroom. And the teachers went in and we 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 just put down our names next and. Administrators to put down our names next to the students, we had a stronger connection with like Dr. Burnham said than just they're in my class. So our next steps, we we started looking at that data and we started looking at students who didn't have had like. Like two or one connection and those are the students that we're gonna, we're gonna kind of focus on and try to make sure that. You know, there's another adult in the building that they can talk to at some point in time. So. The staff kind of got a little anxious about this when we talked about check-ins. What was, what was, we had to go back and re-explain what what we, what the expectation for was a check-in with these students. You know, in their minds, they were thinking it was a twenty-minute out of my day kind of a thing. And it really wasn't, we went back and explained it that it's, hi, how are you, how was your weekend, did you go? Oh, I know you, I know you go horseback riding, did you go horseback riding this weekend, how was that, those types of questions, how are things? So at least you provide that opportunity of if a student is struggling or there is something going on, you know, they have that opportunity to to talk to an adult or at least share something positive too. You know, again, it's about just having another trusted adult in the building, we did it at every grade level, so. Kindergarten teachers actually went up through the first and second grade classes also. Because sometimes they have a stronger connection to some of those kids, some of those kids will still come back and talk to them every now and then if they see them in the hallway, so. That was, that was really nice to see when you start putting all that together. Our next steps, I'd work with students. So Stephanie Miller, the school adjustment counselor, will be, will be, I'll be working with her to develop a tool. Or a method to collect who students identify with as far as the staff goes. And then we're gonna administer that. And then we'll analyze the student data with the staff, so we're gonna take the two sets of data, the ones from the students and the ones from the staff and put them side by side. And have some discussions around what we find. And then after that, there is a little bit more to having those conversations with students, there is, there is some, there are, there may be some PD opportunities around that. So we want to kind of identify anything that we may possibly need as a building. And then. I want to complete, I was thinking about doing this. We're gonna have to do it again in the fall with the incoming kindergarten, we'll have some of the data from first and second grade, from the kindergarten and first graders will be first and second graders. But I definitely want to make sure that we're we're looking at. That data on a regular basis or those connections on a regular basis and include those in a in our data cycles that we're, we'll start working on next year. As one of our data cycles with teachers. You know, obviously, any students that we identify that we can start making connections with now that are in second grade, we don't have a long opportunity with them. You know, obviously any students that we identify that we can start making connections with now that are in second grade, we don't have a long opportunity with them. So that was, that was one thing that I was concerned about, but I will definitely share this information with Mrs. Champagne. So she is aware. You know, these are the kids that we identified that we needed to add some additional adult supports to. So just so you have that, those kids will be on the, those students will be known going into Turkey Hill. So she won't, she won't have to do that again. So.
Thank you. Mrs. Champagne?
So this was the first time that we did this exercise, relationship mapping. I was not familiar with it. I introduced it to my staff with a very, very brief video about, you know, identifying children with whom you felt you had a personal rapport or a strong personal connection to. And what I noticed in the results is that every child was covered. Every child had three or four names next to it. So the reflection afterwards is I, I understand how that happened, right? As a teacher, I would want to say that I knew all of my students in a personal way. I totally understand how that would happen. But then the curious part would be, how do students feel? And who did they identify as these adults in the building with whom they have a strong rapport? So that's really what I'm interested in is, is trying to find a way to, to get students to respond to that and who they would identify as a, a safe personal connection in the school. And then as a staff, can we look at the the juxtaposition of those two collections of data and see how they compare? And, and, and what we might glean from that in terms of what does it mean to have a personal rapport with a student? What do we need to know about them in order for them to trust us enough to speak with us when they, when they don't feel safe, when they, when they encounter challenges?
Thank you. And Mr. Santri?
I have not completed this important work of relationship mapping with the middle high school. Yet I have worked with Jamie Millet and creating a template and how we're going to get that work done. We've created a tool with a spreadsheet. With the assistance of our social workers, we'll be getting that work done this May and then again in October. So once again, just like our SWAT analysis, we'll be able to cross reference and identify any students that are lacking adult relationships. We'll be able to walk over that data from eighth to ninth grade as well as fifth grade to sixth grade and take a look at our trends and make sure that every student in our building has an adult that they can turn to. So I'm looking forward to that work.
So next steps from here relative to climate culture. We will come back and provide a report for any of the additional data that we gather between now and the end of the year for the school committee. And our work really is going to be to identify those areas for targeted action. What does all of this data tell us? What does it tell us holistically for the district level? What does it tell us for specific schools? How does it inform our goal setting, whether that's in district improvement goals or school improvement goals? And what action steps do we need to develop? What action plans do we need to develop under our strategy for continuous improvement as it relates to our climate culture work moving forward? There's a lot of work going on. It's not all completed yet. But we are committed to, to this work and, you know, gathering the data from multiple perspectives. Because that, that's the nature of school climate and culture. It's there for everyone and the different members in that environment may have different perceptions. We need to understand all of them in order to, to make some good decisions around what needs to be done to make sure that things feel good for all of the members of the community. So work is ongoing. It's good work. We're making progress. But we'll open it up now to your questions.
Sure thing. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? My screen is such, I can't see everybody. So I'm looking. No, I don't, I don't.
Sophie. Oh, Sophie. Hi. Yeah, sorry. I just have not a question but a comment. Just Dr. Burnham and all of the principals, thank you so much for your always thorough, great work and coming and presenting all of it to us. I know we rarely have questions and that's because you guys do such a great job. So thank you so much and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, I would just make the comment that I know culture has been a major focus and, and concern since, oh, a few years ago, we, we saw that there were so many high school students that didn't feel that they had a trusted adult they could go to. So I'm glad to see that this work is being done and being done so thoroughly. Because definitely necessary work. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Skull and Brean?
What do we think can be done to bring up the parents' response rates?
You know, it's interesting that you asked that because we, we asked that question of the consultants that facilitated this survey for us. They're the ones that compiled all the data and gave us basically all, almost all of the slides in the slide deck that you saw this evening. And, and we asked the question, what should we make of a low participation rate amongst the parents? And they said, you had a good participation rate amongst the parents based on their work. But I think maybe, maybe over time as parents come to see what we're doing with this information, they'll see a benefit. You know, it's hard to say. We don't want to make an assumption and say, oh, well, parents must think everything's okay and they don't need to complete the survey. Because I'm not sure that I'm comfortable making an assumption about the participation rate at this point. But we'll see because the plan is to administer this survey again to see if there's been any change with any of the effort that, that we're making to address some of the feedback that came through this initial administration. Who knows? Maybe we'll get a stronger participation rate next go around. You know, the other thing is, is I think it's a, it's sort of an age old challenge for us in education. Parents are super busy. They're super busy. You know, they juggle an awful lot and you know, do, if they don't have a high level of concern, is there that motivation to sit down and spend some time? This wasn't a five question survey. You know, this was a bit of a commitment to, to make it through. How many people maybe initiated the process and didn't complete it? I'm not sure. But again, continuing to put this information out, you know, the ways in which we're using the data, the importance of getting this input from, from our parents. And honestly, we didn't have a hundred percent participation in our staff either. This is super important. You know, when we look at the information that came through the SWAT analysis, you know, or even the climate survey, you know, Mr. Adams talked about it. Communication, communication, communication. I think that, you know, we have to be sure to message for our staff. This is an opportunity for you to communicate and provide us data. Please participate in the survey. We want to hear from you. So I think we just need to continue with that, that message to staff, to, to families. We're doing this because we truly want to gather their input. It's hard to make decisions to improve the district when you don't have a really high level of, of participation in giving you that input.
Is there any way to tie it to like, like when we do these surveys for legal education stuff, you have to turn in the survey in order to get credit for your class. So everybody turns them in. If you like had the parents, and I know people hate this when you call like a service and they're like, stay in the line to take a survey. But when they meet with the teacher at like parent teacher conference, say, you know, like, have the teacher say, you know, here, be sure to take this survey. It'll provide us with data. And then the other idea I had was, what if there was like a giveaway associated with, so that everybody's survey entry becomes like, you know, you get like a fifty dollar Amazon or Whole Foods or now they're the same thing. iTunes gift card or something so that there's like a, an incentive to do it. I, I don't know. I mean, I just feel like the participation in town government is low, the participation in the school committee process is low. And this process is low and I don't, I, I think that like that's, that's the first step in figuring out what the problems are, if there are any.
Well, that's the key, right? If there are any. And I can tell you that in the four years I've been here, things that are really super concerning to parents, they do come out, they do participate, they do attend forums. I've held many forums where I've had one, one attendee. I think one evening, Mr. School and Brean, it was your wife that was the sole attendee for a parent forum.
I remember this.
Right? So I don't know. What is that takeaway? Because when we have other issues that are of high importance and high value to parents, they do come out. I mean, hundreds.
The COVID mask mandate.
We had a hundred and sixty eight people at one point on that, on that meeting, the night that we were making the decision about. So I think the communication is out there. People know, like they all knew that we were going to make that decision that night. We pushed out our school committee meeting agendas to the families on Mondays when they officially post up at Town Hall. It seems to me that people by and large have a lot of information and they really, they, they do find a way to come to participate for things that it would appear for things that have a lot of importance to them. I don't know. Maybe that's an assumption too. I don't know. Other, other thoughts from my admin team about, you know, historic participation at the building level for different meetings that you've had. I know that we've, in, in recent years, we've had Zoom drop ins to explain the eye ready assessment, the data that comes from it, literacy support. Other, other thoughts from the admin team about parent participation?
I do think that the length of a survey is impactful. How, how, I mean, even for you and me, right? It, it matters if it's a short survey or a long survey, whether we're not, we're going to participate. I remember pre-COVID, I tried to have a, a weekly feedback for parents that I think every week I was sending out something. And initially I had a pretty good response rate, but it was very brief and they could, they could, they could like, I think even text back their responses. It was, it was, it was a really quick sort of thing. But yeah, you're right. Like the eye ready meetings that we've had, three, maybe three participants. So, so it really does depend on the topic as well.
Dr. Burnham, I think, I think if you have multiple students of multiple levels in the district, I think that might have played a factor in some of our response rates. You know, especially with some of my families that have kids at almost every, every building. You know, you're filling out the same survey with those questions and, and it was, I think it was challenging when you look at those questions for four, four separate students. So I think, you know, maybe trying to find a way to help some of the families with that might, might, you know, because I had people calling me saying, I'm giving up. I'm done. Okay.
You know, and the challenge in this particular case with this particular is that this is a tool that's been developed and has been shown as a valid measurement of school climate. So we, we really shouldn't sort of, you know, monkey around with the tool that's been developed and, and demonstrated to be a valid measure of, of school climate. Because when we're messing around with it, we're, we're potentially now impacting the validity of, of the survey. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge for sure. Mr. Santri, you were going to say something?
Just a real quick comment. I, Mr. Scullibrini, I have seen that strategy at other schools. They have set up Chromebooks or laptops and ask parents to take the survey on the way out. But as Chad and Dr. Burnham touched upon it, we had to make so many decisions in such a short time during that pandemic, there might be a case of burnout for, for surveys at this point. You know, I hate to say it, even though the information is critical and crucial. Many families having to fill out three or four for every, you know, questionnaire, it, it, it might have served us some burnout. So hopefully we'll have a bounce back after that and we get on this other side of the pandemic.
Tough situation all around, you know, I, I'm thinking of the survey that I bailed on this week because it was too long. So I get it. It wasn't as important as my kid's education. That's a little different, but, but just the same, I get it. It's a tough one.
It's a lot.
But, but thank you for the work that you do in this because it is important and
We are, we are going to be putting out a homegrown, shorter communication survey to families. Because that is the information that's really important to us to get. What kinds of communication work best for you? What is working? What's not working? Suggestions for improvement, like all of that in, in multiple levels, district level, school committee, news, school based, down to the classroom level. So there will be a, a more abbreviated homegrown survey to get us some more targeted information specific to the practices that we've been engaged in here in the district around communication. It'd be helpful to know what, what they find to be helpful and what's not so helpful and how we can make some improvements in that regard too. So hopefully, hopefully they'll answer the shorter survey when we send that out in a couple of weeks.
Okay. If that's all we have on that topic, I think the next one is MASC equity workshop dates. And I asked to put this on because as part of our goals, we had talked about doing a workshop on equity. And so I went to the MASC website. They do not have a packaged workshop that I could say we can all watch like we did the superintendent evaluation. They, they don't happen to have one of those. So we would have to, I would have to ask Dorothy if someone on staff gives one and then we'd have to figure out a date for them to come out and do it. So before I made the initial, can you come and do it? I thought I might have an idea on dates or, you know, if this is something that we don't think we can get in before the end of the school year, should we wait till like August? Or how we want to do it? My initial thought was hitting the Wednesdays that we don't meet since most of us don't have commitments every Wednesday because we have to be here for a lot of them. I just didn't know what, what thoughts people have regarding this and is this still a priority for the group? So comments?
I think the days will ultimately depend on, I know Brian's probably in my situation and maybe even Tony's sports are just starting. And all of our kids' schedules, we're still waiting for baseball schedules and soccer schedules. So certainly this is something as a group everyone wants to do. I'm sure we can make it work, but I wouldn't go as far to say that all Wednesdays are available right now since we still haven't gotten our schedules.
So maybe this is something that should be put off for the next go around or the go around after to determine, once the sports schedules come out, I forgot about that because I don't have to go to those games. So I do go to a few, but i- if I'm not there, it's not imp- So I do go to a few, but i- if I'm not there, it's not imperative. So I don't know. What do you think? Should we table this for now and come back at it? What are your thoughts in general about the workshop? Is, is that something that we still want to do? Mr. Leighton?
Thanks. In regards to the workshop, I guess if we did do it, I think it might be better to, to get the MASC dates that they're available because I think sometimes they can be pretty busy themselves too. And if any of the dates work, then we could do it. But honestly, I was more open to just having a discussion about what we wanted to do with the equity goal and, and some other options besides the MASC presentation or overview. I thought we could have some good discussions between ourselves too. I had seen even a policy from another district that I was interested in that we could discuss too.
Just, Carol?
And Laura? We did meet with some consultants around equity audit. That was part of a school committee goal as well. I think there's a possibility that depending on what direction we go, you might be able to have that consultant come do a presentation targeted to school committee. Once a decision's made. It's not on the agenda for this evening to have that discussion and a decision around that because we're still waiting on proposals.
Right.
But we, we should have those for the next meeting. So potentially, you know, if, if you're so inclined, I could reach out to see if consultants are available to do workshops for school committees in the, in the evening.
I think that that first person we met with specifically said that she would like to meet with the school committee. So if all goes to plan, I think I couldn't imagine a better presentation coming from anywhere else, to be honest.
So if, should we have, should we set up then as a agenda item, a discussion around what we want to do with the equity goal and revisiting the goal in general. And if Brian has information he wanted to share with us, maybe we should do that. And then as, as we figure out who the consultant ends up being, then after we've had the discussion, we can decide if that's the direction we want to go in. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Mr. School and Breney?
One thing that I wanted to add, I did not realize, because I'm new and uneducated in this area, but I thought MASC, MASC was like a group of volunteers, like school committee. I did not realize that they were like paid professionals that do these presentations. I found the presentation that I went to a couple of weeks ago, I thought it was not very good. The legal information they gave was just like completely wrong. And my concern would be that given that the equity component will touch on Title VI and Title IX, that I would prefer to not use them as a provider. They were, they went more than an hour and a half over the budgeted time. The presentations were simply people reading, you know, reading pre-prepared scripts. They, the questions that they took from the crowd, they did not answer them. I mean, I don't know about the education stuff, but I know about the law stuff and they just got them wrong. And so like, I, I had a very strong negative reaction and I did not give them that feedback because I thought they were all volunteers. And then it turns out that, you know, the one guy makes like a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. And I was like, this is crazy. That was terrible. So I would not use them for anything, but that's just me. I mean, if other people found them useful, then I'm happy to sit through another presentation, but I, I would, I would definitely prefer another source.
Well, I'm sorry that you had that kind of experience.
That's all right.
Well, not really, but it is what it is. I mean, we can't change it. We have had good luck with our local person, Dorothy Presser. And, and the MASC representative that came out to talk about chapter 70 was certainly quite knowledgeable. But the people you ran into that day certainly weren't. And it's something to look at. So why don't we just put this on as an addition, additional agenda item? And then Brian, if you want to bring the information you want to look at, and then we'll look at our goal as a whole and then decide where we want to go. Is that what you're thinking?
I could send the policy that I saw to Dr. Burnham and she could disperse it out to everyone, just so everybody has it, so we can be prepared to discuss it.
Yeah. That seems a reasonable approach. Yep, I would be fine with that. Okay, why don't we consider that we'll do that, that way? Okay, old business civics update.
This is where I will invite Mrs. Blank back to the discussion as well as Mrs. Stevens and Mrs. Foyle.
For, I'm going to screen share our presentation and then Warren is going to start us off, I think.
And I apologize, I was in a more regular setting. I'm now on the floor of my son's room. It got late and it's bedtime. So we're, we're on the floor reading Lama Lama ninety-nine right now. So but we could, we could do this quick because I think Lisa and Mary are actually doing most of it. But um, so this is about the, the civics requirement. And actually, Lisa, if you just hit the next slide. So back in 2018, Governor Bacon Legislature, they, they passed along, he signed the law into effect to, as it states here, all Massachusetts students will be educated in the histories of the Commonwealth, the United States and the world. They will be prepared to make informed civic choices and assume their responsibility for strengthening equality, justice and liberty in and beyond the United States. That included both a requirement in the eighth grade that all eighth grade students across the states take a civics, full year civics course, and also provided a requirement that all eighth grade students will complete a civics project and all high school students, at least once in high school, will complete a civics project. So at the high school level, that, that, that's what we focused on is the, the high school requirement, which is for all students to complete a civics project. We created a, an elective, a half-year course that students can take to fulfill that project called Civic and Community Engagement. And over the past two school years, 100 students have taken the Civic and Community Engagement course, 60 juniors and 40 sophomores. The class of 2023 is the first class for which this is a graduation requirement. So that's actually our current juniors. So we are well on pace to, to have all our juniors meet that. Our classes usually range between 100 and 110 kids by the time they graduate. And we already have 60 juniors having taken it. And on the slide, it does state that 94 students are signed up for the Civic and Community Engagement course for next school year, 2022, 2023. So we're going to have, we're going to have plenty of room to be able to get those final juniors taking it as well as, you know, the upcoming juniors and sophomores being able to at least start that process. Also, there are 12 students who will be fulfilling the civics project by taking English IV CSL honors. That is a course that had already existed prior to this requirement. And because they already did a civics project, it was natural to allow that to also count towards their fulfillment of the project. So numbers wise, we're looking really good and we have been able to handle the numbers with running five sections of Civic and Community Engagement. Try to get those 92, 94 students spending on the year to, to fulfill the requirements.
Okay. So I'm Mary Foyle and I teach most of the civics sections at the high school as well as the English IV Community Service Learning class. There's so much I could say, I could talk all night. I won't. Because in my head is the email back and forth that we had with Warren, Lisa and myself. And Warren was like, brief. And these are the topics that we're supposed to be talking about as reminders. So professional development opportunities. I have, I actually was trying to, I have a lot tagged on a bookmark on my bar on my website. And a kid was asking me about something today and I hit it and I sat there for a minute as it just kept scrolling down because I've bookmarked so much. Because I've been teaching this about six years, but my, my initial foray into it was under the guise of community service learning. And they have a lot of similarities to it. And so I was able to connect those. So what's on here is actually more recent opportunities that I've been able to go through and then able to get those sources out to other people. I somehow, in the first summer of the pandemic, hit this Cato Institute, which is actually a libertarian institute. It's very interesting. But they're really trying to push civic atmosphere and civic discussion in communities and focusing on high schools. Oh, Lisa, can you go back? Thanks. And so I had the opportunity last summer to actually go to Cato for an institute and the networking and the professional opportunities are just amazing within there. And so I've been able to move into like every Monday, we do something called Both Sides where we look at an issue and we look at, I hate being narrowed down to binary concerns, but it's kind of what our political system is. It's like, we looked at the middle class last week. This week we're looking at minimum wage. We've looked at should college debt be erased? So civic issues that, that the government is looking at. So Cato does a great job with that. The MASC civics fellowship is a great opportunity for anyone teaching civics. I happen to be a fellow this year. I was really surprised I got chosen. As an English teacher, I feel like I'm an interloper in all of these. And they offer a lot of workshops, especially for teachers who are just for what they can be doing. There, there's a lot of resources for eighth grade. And so something as a fellow that we're looking at is how do we create more resources for high school students? And the resources being different than the eighth grade resources. In fact, Lisa and I were texting during this. I was like, we need to sit down and meet because I know I'm using some of their original eighth grade resources. So I, I don't want to double up on that. And then this year, and I attended it last year too. I hope it remains online because it would just be so hard to get to in person. But MASC Civics Week has existed and there were just so many workshops. In fact, two of them I saw gave me ideas for civics classes with a lens, one with a journalism lens to it and another one with a history is happening here to it where students could look into some, some local history. So there's, there's stuff I have to work a bit more on. One class, we were actually able to zoom in with quite a few other schools, but to Justice Sonia Sotomayor. And she spoke for about 45 minutes to students. It was neat to be one of the schools, zooming into that. We got to wave for a second. And so there are some just really good opportunities in there. It just takes some digging and looking and I try to get those opportunities out to other people as well. I wrote down notes tonight to do some kind of survey workshop because my students do a lot of surveys as well. And I am working on some tools where we maybe can have better access to surveys. Mr. Santri doesn't know that yet, but we have a conversation coming up. I think I have some things to, to help him getting bombarded in that as well. Lisa, if you wouldn't mind going on. Thank you. So all that PD really learns to what I'm hoping are rich student experiences. I say to my students constantly, this work in this class is really my own civics project going on. And I try to use what I'm thinking. I always say all the time, oh, next year I'm going to do this differently. Or give me feedback on this because I want them to know that these projects, they're not linear, that you're constantly reflecting. And in fact, this year I've built in a lot more reflection. And so I'm constantly changing what I'm doing and I hope that they see that as an example. It's also interesting for me to balance the difference between what my English class is doing and what my civics class is doing, but the projects are the same, but there are different expectations. So under research, these are all student examples. It's really too small to see. But you have an example of an infographic that a student did. I actually think Mrs. Archibald, that's a student who you met with. And Dr. Burnham, I think you met with her as well, where my, my senior honors class has to do a 10-page research paper. On the civics class, the research is still important, but they show it as an infographic. I do have students write down proposals and they have to revise their proposals because it's something trying to create those real-world experiences that they'll have. And so there's example proposals and I try to push them to have timelines. At the end of the process for their final exam, they do, they do a presentation on what their project was about. And they have a reflection slide as part of that where I'm asking, you know, did you learn new skills? What if you pulled in from other classes that you used here? So really that, trying to push thinking, as basic as that sounds, that's really my goal, research and thinking. And then the product project, this group here with this involved, they've created a whole website so that student will go live with students, so students and community can know what kind of volunteer opportunities exist and to whom to reach out for those volunteer opportunities. So it's, I'm growing constantly. They are, I, I know a lot of you, my students have reached out to you. That's still a process. I, I'm reaching out to PD resource of my own of how do I better streamline that process? Very concerned about weighing down what we call our community partners. Mr. Beardmore, I saw that you are online. I have some students digging into financial stuff and if they haven't sent you an email, they're about to. I know Mr. Cassidy has already gotten that email. So I, I'm, the PD isn't ongoing. And at this point, I'm looking at for myself, other resources because of the state project having just started and me having taught it for a while, I'm beyond some of the initial. And so now I'm, I'm trying to bridge out to, to other agencies that will have information that could be PD that we could further build these experiences for students. I'm all set, Lisa.
Thanks, Mary. And Mary and I are excited. We believe it's moving forward, but it looks like I'm going to be taking one of those five classes of the Civic and Community Engagement next year. As what I believe I told Mr. Santri today will be the last time I teach a new class for a very long time. But we look forward to working between the eighth grade and high school civics projects. So just like Mary said, there are different expectations for them, but they have a lot of similarities. So it's going to be a nice crossover. We are just starting in eighth grade, the project portion, because we plan on doing it. Because it follows our curriculum, we plan on doing it in the fourth quarter, which is exactly where we are right now. So iCivics is, I mean, I also could talk on here about how much I love iCivics forever. iCivics PD is fantastic. We are so lucky we have that as a free resource. Massachusetts educators particularly are so lucky that we have our own website segment on iCivics that coordinates everything with Massachusetts state standards. And David Buchanan, who runs Massachusetts iCivics, is available all the time. We communicate frequently. He does PD, he invites us to everything. The common planning that the eighth grade civics teachers do on Wednesday afternoons. We have taken part in some iCivics PD during the day, during that class period. It doesn't always line up. But we've been able to connect with them, some Q and A's and project prep. Outside of iCivics, but working in connection with them, the Democratic Knowledge Project out of Harvard University. Fantastic. I mean, of course, it's out of Harvard University. They are picking some really excellent speakers. They have a high, you know, high quality level that they're looking for. And I did some PD with them, I think, two weeks ago. And we really focused on the nonpartisan part of these civics projects. So for anyone who's listening, you know, that is a really important component of this. They are nonpartisan civics projects. And students don't always come up with project ideas that are nonpartisan. So we worked a lot on some strategies for helping educators help guide students in making a project of interest, a nonpartisan project of interest. That's like a trick, some tricky stuff we have to navigate. And, and we're going to need to work together, work with other educators on how that works.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Oh, no, sorry.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, gosh, okay. My watch went bananas. So here is the eighth grade civics education project process. We really need to do the curriculum first. So in eighth grade, because it's not a class focused on the project, it's a project that's a part of the class in this sense. We've covered the founding of the United States Branches of Government Citizenship Elections. We've connected with local leaders. Mr. Franco came in and visited with us. Mr. Jeffries came in, both from the Select Board. Kids asked a ton of questions that they pre-planned. Excellent presentations. They are our liaisons. We do not want to overwhelm our community leaders, like Mary said, with emails from students. Also, we are really cognizant that our eighth grade students should not independently be reaching out to a bunch of adults that they do not know. So we want to make sure we're really careful about how we guide them to connect with outside sources. And that's something we're working with other educators from other districts on too, because we have run across that. So the last part, step three, which is what we're going to do post-April vacation. Um, so the last part, step three, which is what we're going to do post-April vacation. It will be to um, work on the the projects and um, there'll be group projects likely for us. Students do have the opportunity to work independently, but it is a lot of work. And the emphasis in eighth grade is that they work on local community projects. In their own school or their local community with others. So it really is a little bit of a different expectation than what the high school is. Um, and we're just working on those skills of navigating local government and. Having students understand what their student voice is. Um, the, we have, uh, iCivics provides a workbook, which we are super happy. That we um purchased a few copies of to help guide us in guiding our students through this. We haven't done them yet. They're brand new. They just came in to me the other day. I took some pictures of them. Um, helps us identify decision makers in town. Um, helping them narrow down questions, concerns, um, issues. The art of an interview. They had a great one on survey making. How you pick questions for a survey, what format you do. Um, all of those things students have never done before. And um, just ending with this, Mary had put this slide in. This is really what it's all about. This is what. You know, the legislature. Voted this in for is because democracy is not a state, it's an act. We are supposed to encourage students to. Do civics, not just learn civics. So, um, that's our presentation.
I will say too, I I forgot to say this, but my classes are a very open door. Come in anytime. Well, let us know. But come in anytime to see what the students are doing. Um, I love to hear what what other people think of it. Some projects are really wonderful. Some projects aren't. Um, but I I think it's it's really good for students to then. But when they're talking to other adults, they sometimes come to the realization of. Oh, maybe I should be doing this. Um, and and others, you know, they. A lot of them really take hold of it and are really proud of the work that they're doing. So anytime you want to come in, just just let us know. I'm I'm sure we can. Make that work because they they really are doing some fabulous, fabulous work.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the civics crew? I think, I think I'm so happy to see this in the schools the way it is and I was so glad. That the state voted it in as, um, I'm sure everybody knows my kids are older. And neither one of them receives civics in school. And um, my daughter's was a history major who went. To college, majoring in history with no civics background at all. So, um, that was tough and um, I'm just so happy that. Uh, this is here as a requirement. And that the kids are interacting with it and doing it, as you said. They're not just learning it, they're doing it. And I hope that in ten years or five years or. When they graduate from high school, we'll see some. Um, some of them in local government. Because that's the point. That's the point of it all. So, um, thank you very much for the work you do on this.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, we have an athletics presentation. Mr. Benell, I'm assuming this is you.
Good guess. That's a. Um, uh, James Bonnell, Athletic Director for the District. Um, thank you guys for having me tonight. Um, Dr. Burnham. Uh, told me that I have a two-hour window to my presentation, so I take full advantage of that. Um, but uh, no, I'm kidding. Um, hopefully, uh, I just wanted to. Give you a brief up on spring and Dr. Burnham and I put together a, or I put together, um. Just a, a quick little PowerPoint, um, hitting on how the department is communicating information out. And and some of the things that we as the department, as the athletic department have on this year, um. To both enhance and and gain. You know, provide information and gain a better understanding of of ongoings within the, within the department. Um, first, I'm going to start off. I I believe you guys all have the the information that I sent um in your folders. Um, with the the spring sports, um, report, um, with the numbers, um, that. Are like out of this world amazing. Um, uh, say the least, when you, when you look at, um, last year having middle school. Students in middle school only like fifty-something participating to over a hundred and something. Participating in this year, you, you, we're talking over a hundred percent increase of of participation and a little bit of that does. Um, coincide with the structure that we have. Um, in place with Mr. Santri as the principal over. Um, both the middle, high school, but. In in reality, a lot of the things, a a lot of the offerings, we had those offerings in place last year for students in grade seven and eighth. Um, there's just so many more students that have. Come out in part in are participating, which is awesome. I I I don't. Know what other word to describe it that. The the amount of kids that we're able to service after school that are in good hands of such wonderful coaches that we have in the district is. It, it, it's just great seeing that. Um, this number, the number of u- unified track that has changed, it actually has gone up. We've gained six more students. Um, in unified track, which is, which is wonderful to see between both students and partners. Um, so that percentage is going to increase even more at the high school level. Um, but just overall, across the board, you can, you can see that. There's a large number of. Students that are staying after to participate in athletics. And. They're in a safe spot. They're they're learning from great coaches and they're doing something that they enjoy. Uh, we had a wonderful track meet yesterday at home. Um, which I got to be a part of and see all these, all the kids doing their thing. Um. Baseball, softball kicked off on Monday. Bo- uh, Boys Lacrosse had a game yesterday. Girls Lacrosse played on. Monday night, it's, it was spring is underway and it's in full swing and it's, it's just great to be a part of being outside, seeing kids. You know, doing what they enjoy without having to. You you know, ride them, wear a mask, riding the bus to away games to just. Pretty much almost very close to having a a normal sports season again. Um. That's spring sports. Any questions?
No, it looks like spring has sprung.
Bring. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Layton.
Thanks. I did have a question in regards to co-ops. Are there any co-ops in the spring? And if you could just talk about those briefly.
Sure. Um, we do have a, we have two co-ops, one that we host and one that we are a guest. Um, we still host, um, for Boys Lacrosse, students from Fitchburg and students from AIR. This year, AIR has sent us one student. Um, and Fitchburg has sent us four. Um. Which add to that lacrosse number, I think it puts it a little over thirty. From where it was. The the number that I sent you in the Excel document is just our kids. Um, so we can add an additional five to Boys Lacrosse. Which helps us pretty much. Able to sustain two teams where a lot of, especially in Boys and Girls Lacrosse this year, I I hope it's not a. An ongoing trend, but a lot of the schools that we do play, um. Have notified us that they were unable to fail field a JV level team. Uh, which makes things a little difficult. For scheduling purposes, um, an awesome thing for us is that we are able to field both teams, but. Trying to find partner of other schools to compete against. Um. Has become a little bit of challenging, but we're working on. Figuring out how to. Recoup those games that we have lost. Um, we are a guest with Fitchburg High School for tennis. Um, for Boys and Girls, there were no boys that signed up this year. Um, and there were a couple of girls that signed up. It's not a varsity level. Sport this year at Fitchburg, they, um, they graduated a lot and they're focused more on uh like a rebuilding and developmental program. And we have two girls currently signed up for, um. For that, and I know we are working on the communication with the new coach that they have hired to. Get those uh kids interested o- at that over there and participating in tennis.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Mr. School and Briny.
Uh, Mr. Brown, I was looking at the data that you sent over. Why is there so few auctions for sixth grade, sixth graders?
That, um. Well, they have, we have middle school track that that's really. The school sport offering, um, back in the fall, the school committee, um. With the new structure of leadership at the high school, um, it wa- it was. In-school committee policy or. With sports that sixth graders are not, um, were not able to compete at the varsity level. Um, it was just for seventh and eighth grader or at the high school level, just for seventh and eighth graders. Um, to compete at the high school level. Fig, for largely uh, um, part that a lot of. The town offerings for. That younger level are available still. Where at the high, where at the the school level. Where teams are actually struggling to field a JV. Type program with even seventh and eighth graders to then add middle school programming on top of that. Schools that that did offer those middle school programs are now even taking a further step back and not even. Having those. Where track is, you know, not a one-size-fits-all, but a a lot of students of a lot of different abilities can participate. I- in track in some way, shape or form that that. That's a, uh, a sport that is not going to go away anytime soon. Because it it can reach so many different levels. Does that help answer your question or?
Yeah, so I just want to jump in here on this one too. It was several years ago that we started a middle school. Uh, sports program, an athletic program. Uh, and there were surveys that were uh administered to gauge interest in which types of sports. Um, you know, students and families were were looking to see in a middle school program. Uh, once we had that information, um, AD Bunnel had to then look. Regionally to see uh what other districts also had existing middle school teams. Um, without other teams to compete against, we we really wouldn't be able to have a season. Um, so it was a, it was a complicated, uh, multi-stage uh attempt to to establish. Some middle school athletic programs. Um, and that's why certain things are open to, um, to sixth graders. Uh, some things are open to seventh and eighth graders at the high school level, but only. It's been our practice here, uh, based on school committee vote. That only under conditions when we need to field a team. Um, when we would not, we would not otherwise have a team. Um, you know, we we then allow seventh and eighth graders to participate at the high school level. Hopefully that's helpful as well.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Any other questions? Okay.
And then, am I able to share my screen or? Yes. Can everybody kind of see? I hope I did it right.
Yes.
Um, so this is just a quick, um, winter sports recap. We had a hundred and ninety-four total students participating in winter athletics. Um, we had one student recognized as a league MVP, sixteen league All-Stars and two league championships. Um, we had several member, several individuals, um, individual track records were broken. Members of the track team competed at the state championship meet. Um. Additionally, one moved on to the New England championship meet. And some even qualified and competed at the national championship. Um, in New York, uh, the girls' basketball team this year under the state tournament. Uh, the new state tournament format made it all the way to the final four. Um, we had home. I guess home field advantage, um, all the way up until the game, the final four game, which they unfortunately lost. Um, the girls' basketball team and the girls' indoor track team were both recognized with MI, MIAA State Sportsmanship Awards. This is our fifth and sixth state sportsmanship award as an apart, as a department this year. Um, that's. Almost unheard of. Um, for teams to be recognized from the state, uh, that so many in in one year. Um, the girls' indoor track team have received their award already, girls' basketball. Um, I I guess I'm kind of breaking the news to them over, um. Over this meeting, uh, the players don't know, but the coach and and Mr. Santri do know, uh, we're working on setting up time for. The MI to come down and present the girls' team with that award. Um, there are more details with specifics on the students who who advanced in what. Um, and what records and and what, um, accomplishments were, um, available in. The winter sports recap that I sent out, um, or sent to Mr. Santri and that was sent out in his, um, Friday. Email a couple of Fridays ago and was also posted on the communication platform that the department uses. And it's also available on the Athletic Department website. Um. Lunenburg Athletic Department and how we communicate. Um. Basically, since since coming here four years ago, one of the things that, um. Was brought to my attention was that they want, people wanted more. More, more information or just, uh, places to find information or to just. Have somewhere to go where they could. Find out about the athletic department. I I I've worked hard to try and and do my best to to. To communicate, to provide this information, um, to all stakeholders involved within the Lunenburg community. Um, knowing that there's always room for improvement, that uh, that I'm definitely not perfect and that I. That I I do. You know, I may miss something here or there, but I am trying my best to get as much information out to everybody as I possibly can. Um. And one of the ways this year was bringing this new, um, technology called SportU. It's a free. Web-based and, um, app-based platform. Um. To all of the, all the athletic teams in in the middle and high school. So parents, actually, if they have a student that's playing. In a middle school team or a high school team across multiple levels. Um, they have one place to go to get their information. Um, coaches, uh, are posting. Results, posting schedule changes, um, general information regarding their teams. Um, on this platform and parents receive notifications. When a coach posts, um. There's also. So this is what a team page looks like. This is just the Boys Ice Hockey Team page. Um. People have to be invited in by the coach. Um, they are, they can communicate with the coach. One of the wonderful things of this platform is. Uh, once somebody joins a team, then no longer can they say, I I really, I didn't receive that message or. Um, you never sent it out because. Once something is sent, as long as you're a member, you can actually, an administrator can go in and look and see. Whose that was sent to and if they've read it or not yet. So someone can always go and say, well, yes, it was sent to you. You just unfortunately didn't read it yet, but the information is there. Um. The teams post their calendar, both of games and practices in that app. And then as soon as something changes, it's very similar. The parents would receive a notification, the same with the players of that change. Um, there's also the Lunenburg Coaches page, which is also on this app as well, where I I try to post, um. A news from the MIAA, um, news from the district, print. Um, files that that pertain to the coach, whether it's an anti-hazing form. Um. Other forms that they need to sign, sign off on. There's videos that can be posted in this. Um, there's also in the coach's calendar, I I've set up different reminders to be sent to them. Um, either check in with their team or check in with the grades. Um, remember to send out like a, uh, an email update as to what is going on. Um. Week. This is just a sample post. You, like I said, videos in there as well. Um. In addition to the SportsU page, um, I I try to send out preseason and. Season newsletters and end of the season recaps. Um. There's information with the athletic schedules that are sent out and Mr. Santri's, uh, weekly update in any. There's information with the athletic schedules that are sent out and Mr. Santri's, uh, weekly update in any pertinent, um, accomplishments or, or updates regarding athletics. Um, there's also the athletic department website, which is here, which I can hopefully, if my link works. Oh, nope, my link didn't work. Um, well, on the athletic department website, there's a whole bunch of information that I post there and updates. We also have the scheduling websites where people can sign up for notifications for even schedule changes as well. I don't know what happened. There is more to my PowerPoint, I promise. Um, also, um, I'm on Twitter and I, I post regularly, um, for game day competitions. And, and special moments like here's the senior recognition for one of the teams. Here's just an example of a, of a schedule announcement that usually goes off in the morning. So as long as people are following me right there at, at Blue Knights at E D one, um, they can, they can get announcements and updates. This year, the MIA added the implicit bias requirement, um, after the fall season. So in the winter season, we, the coaches were awesome in, in getting the students to not only sign the MIA pledge, but to make sure that the students completed their NFHS requirement course. Um, for the spring season, this was able to be added to the registration. So students, uh, were able to just sign off that they have completed this requirement as opposed to the old-fashioned way of, of keeping the paper trail of that. We now have it electronically. Um, and this is now a, a yearly requirement, like concussion requirement for students to take. For tryouts, um, there is, we really rarely have to at anybody. It's, it's more of where the placement of team is going on, where, what placement of the, within the program. Um, and, and coaches are encouraged to, y- you know, share what they're looking for in the students during tryouts. How they're going to be evaluated so that know where they can work on to, to reach that the level that they want to be at. Um, these are just some of the things that are suggestions as to how coaches can go about evaluating students. Um, or try it for those first couple of days of their season. Um, and this is something that we did a couple of years ago, but then the pandemic happened, so it became a little bit harder. And this year, both in the fall and in the wintertime, um, we started to gather data from the student athletes on their experience. Um, to provide feedback, um, working with Dr. Burnham and Mr. Santri to, to see how that we can improve the athletic department. Um, and hear from the, the kids firsthand as to what, you know, what went well, what didn't go well. Um, what they'd like to see changed. Um, some things that are in our control, some things that were out of their control, uh, out of our control are mentioned, but nonetheless, it's good to have that information. Now let's see if this link worked, if I did it right. Oh. Killing me. All right, well. Anyways, there's a a variety of different questions that are asked, um, about your, about the, the team experience, um, the coach's communication. The experience for at practice, uh, knowledge of the sport. And all that is compiled, broken down into graphs. It, um, Dr. Burnham has a copy, Mrs. Santri has a copy of those from the fall and winter season. And they have an, at the end of the, the survey, there's a general overall rating one to five as to how your experience was during the season. Um, both in the fall and in the winter surveys, there were certain things of the, I guess, negative or, or needs improvement piece. Um, a lot of people complained about the transportation aspect, which is something I, I, I do, I, I understand, but it's also something that is a little bit out of our control, given the, the circumstances and, and it's comparable. We're, we're really no different than, than other districts because everybody's facing the same issue, but I do understand how that can be frustrating.
Looks like Mr. Bunnel accidentally exited the meeting. Oh, his power just went out. Alrighty. Okay, so the slides that he had remaining were, um, a summary, um, of the student athlete surveys from the fall. And from the winter. He was also going to share with you, oh, he's back in, maybe on his phone. Hello, Mr. Bunnel. You're muted.
I'm back with a flashlight.
There you go.
I'm sorry, and on my phone. Can't make this stuff up.
So I went over the last two slides with the survey results summarized, and now we've got on display the winter, um, athletics recap.
Oh, thank you. So this is, this is our, um, just the sample of the winter athletics recap. I, I try to just touch upon, um, the awesome accomplishments for, across all of athletics. Um, and just highlight the participation numbers a- and, and what we offer during the season. Um, I started this, this year, um, I did it with the fall. Um, and I, I thought it was successful, so I, I, I wanted to just highlight, like I said earlier, just hit upon the wonderful things that are, that are student athletes and teams and coaches are doing. The one thing that this is missing is the, the girls' basketball state sportsmanship award because even as long as I waited to do this one, um, I found out probably two days after that this was sent out, that we did win that award, so I didn't get a chance to put a picture of that in there, but nonetheless, I'll, I'll probably have like a little blurb in the, in the spring sports recap of that accomplishment. I feel like I'm, I'm telling ghost stories.
All right, so are there any questions?
Does anyone on the committee have a question? Um, I would just comment that you certainly had a very successful winter season. Um, and my congratulations to the student athletes who work so hard um, during the winter to make that happen and their coaches. And, um, thank you for the update on the communication. Because communication has been a theme this evening. We've heard a lot about communication tonight, and you certainly have tried to incorporate different types of of communication and, and ways to make, um, people aware of what's going on easier. Um, does anyone on the committee have any comments? I want to thank you for your flashlight effort. And and I hope your power comes back on soon.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that and I, I apologize.
That one's out of your control.
Thank you, Mr. Bunnel.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Um, so next is an action item which has to do with Keystone Collaborative Update.
And the action that we're seeking is the acceptance of a report, uh, an update. Um, so this update is the Keystone Collaborative Quarterly Update. Uh, currently, the, um, census, the, the number of students enrolled in programs is one hundred and fifty students across all of the programs, um, that they offer. The, um, DESI Program Review has been completed and, um, the executive director is awaiting the report from DESI. Um, that currently, he's only aware of one issue and it was a procedural documentation issue around program manuals um, being returned from, from families and held on file. So that adjustment will be made. Um, the new Fitchburg location is, uh, undergoing bathroom renovations. Um, there's continued support of the member districts of the collaborative through contacted contracted services such as occupational therapists, school psychologists, et cetera. Um, and Keystone will soon be receiving a TrexO robotic gate trainer. Um, it will be a one-year lease and will assist, um, in assessing and teaching students with physical limitations who require gate training. That's a progress, uh, report from our Keystone Collaborative. And that's all I have for you this evening.
All right, does anyone have any questions about, um, the progress report, the quarterly report? Um, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the report? Uh, Mrs. Kelly?
I will make a motion to accept this Keystone Quarterly Update.
And do I, um, Ms. Shapiro?
I'll second that motion.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Mr. School and Brini? Yeah, that's a thumbs up.
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Um, that brings us to public comments. And public comments at this point are open to any comment under the authority, scope of authority of the school committee. Is there anyone in the public with a comment? I am not seeing any raised hands.
Nor am I.
Okay, then we will assume there are no comments. Anybody on the committee with a comment? I had one comment. I didn't want to make it at the beginning because I thought maybe I'd be stealing, um, our student representative's thunder. But I wanted to congratulate the, um, high school band on this silver award at the Mic Competition over the weekend. So, um, that being said, reports, the Athletic Advisory Committee?
Yes, so we met, uh, on Monday in person. It was a seven o'clock meeting. Um, one of the things we've been working on is a, a booster guide, um, as there's pretty much constant turnover and boosters as kids graduate. Um, a lot of our members thought it was a good idea to put ideas down on paper, so that way as people leave and new people come in, that there's a lot more information passed down. So we've been working on that. Um, we're also, we, we keep bringing up a unified booster, so we've been kind of brainstorming that, talking about the pros and cons and still looking to get more information about that, but still looking into a potentially unified booster. There was also an update on the snack shack, but it continues to be an ongoing dialogue and then still trying to work on a resolution, so a lot of, a lot of the fall sports, um, I'm looking forward to trying to access as much as they can, um, utilizing the snack shack. We had three approved fundraisers, uh, the, the golf, the golf boosters was looking to get, uh, they got a, a raffle ticket, uh, booster approval, um, to get ready for the fall. And then Track and Field had two fundraisers approved, a, a car wash and then a Blue Knights umbrella sale. So look out for those, uh, umbrellas and go out and buy an umbrella. We'll be meeting again in June as well.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, Finance Committee, they have been extremely busy. Uh, they, since our last meeting, they met on March seventeenth with our administration. Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy attended to go over our budget. And they had, um, the administrative budget and an unclassified budget, which I guess is just anything that doesn't fit someplace else. And they talked about debt service. On the twenty-third, they met and heard from Monte Tech. And as many times as I hear that, I'm never exactly sure how that all works, but, um, we ended up that have to pay more. And basically what it comes down to is that we pay more, Sterling pays more. And, um, it has to do with the formula and its state run. It, they, Monte Tech requires very little over the, um, foundation budget. Uh, there was, I think it was sixty thousand dollars over the foundation budget, split between all fourteen or whatever it is districts. So, um, basically it's what the state says you have to pay. So there's not much conversation on that.
Um, girl, I had heard, I had heard that there was more Lunenburg students going this, this.
They shared there are more Lunenburg students going, but even, even with that, it's out of whack. Excuse me. Um, yeah, it went from, I think, eighty-two to ninety-four. And four of those are school choice. Um, so you know, that adds to it as well. Two of them, I think, at Leominster Trade and two at Nishoba Valley. Um, definitely the high increase that we saw this year is, um, due in great amount to the additional enrollment. But it's still out of whack. And, um, like, we pay and I know very different communities, but, but Athol pays three thousand dollars a kid. We end up paying like twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a kid. Um, we asked about, the Finance Committee was very good about questioning about how we got an increase in our chapter seventy funding due to low-income um, students. That doesn't translate to them somehow. So, you know, it, it didn't, our low-income status on chapter seventy doesn't help us at all with, um, Monte Tech, which I don't really understand, but they kept asking and I never got an answer that I really completely understood. But anyways, so I watched it. We were meeting simultaneously, so I watched it online. But, um, that was the story on that night. And then they met again the next night on the twenty-fourth. Um, to hear the budget from PAC from the sewer and, um, to talk about other moneyed articles. Um, and then they met again on the thirty-first. And that was the public hearing on the. And that was the public hearing on the budget. There was a lot of discussion about the capital plan and the concern about. Um, our number, um. Regarding the amount it would cost for the air conditioning at the primary school that. Um, that they had asked about the number that Mr. Wanda had put in, and then. Somebody, the other engineers said it could be more, and, um, they did explain that Dr. Burnham is looking into. Shoring up those numbers so that we know exactly what it is we will be dealing with, so, um.
Or at this point, Ms. Ashambo, that, um, for the benefit of the, the committee, that we, um. We've, we've consulted with, uh, an engineer that will, um, be coming in to do a peer review. So they'll take a look at the original design for the building. Um, and what was originally included in that design relative to the AC. Uh, but they'll also take a look at the, uh, specs that were put out by DiGiorgio, um, more recently and offer an opinion. Um, as to what, what might be the, the appropriate, uh, way forward or which option is. Good option or not a good option, uh, or if they're both equally good options, uh, we'll find out. There's, where, they, they understand that we're working on a timeline here because the town meeting is, uh. The first. Or Saturday in May, so.
So, yes. Okay, so that, that was basically what the discussion was about that, and they are meeting again on the fourteenth of April. So now I've moved all my papers, okay, here we go. Um, the PTO, the PTO is meeting next Monday night. School councils, primary school.
We have not met.
And the elementary school?
We met on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, um, Heidi already went over a lot of what we talked about with the, uh, climate. Survey results, um, MCAS is well underway, apparently everyone is doing great. Um, they have got their new protocols in place regarding the lunchroom. I think fourth and fifth grader back to the way it was pre-COVID. Um, where they're all eating lunch together, recess together, third grade, because it is such a large class, is still split in two, which is probably the best move for right now. Um, we went over the school improvement plan goals and math and reading, and, um. To be honest, I do not have the date for the April meeting, so I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much, and the middle school, did you meet?
We did, and, uh, the thing that I took away was the upcoming dates for MCAS testing. Um, and they're doing prep for that, and I think, trying to remember the other thing that Mr. Santry said. He tried to, uh, end the meeting early, and I was all in favor of that, so I don't remember what he said after that.
Alrighty, and the high school?
Um, the high school met on the twenty-fourth, um, so yeah, some similar stuff. MCAS sessions one and two of tenth grade ELA are in the books. The high school tried a new proctor schedule with, um, administration only, and it worked much better. Um, biology, physics, and tenth grade math are scheduled and to come. We had a budget update. Um, from Mr. Santry, and he gave us an update on the budget process. Um, he's hoping for a position for tier-two support, um, that will be achievable after town meeting, hopefully. Um, we talked about the high school class registration process. As of the twenty-fourth. They had received all core selection data from grades eight through eleven, expecting, um, the full picture of, they were expecting the full. Picture of scheduling that week. Um, on the thirty-first, they were scheduled to start Power School Scheduling Training, which is the first step in class schedule building. And they are on schedule for master schedule building, and they're working hard to minimize scheduling conflicts. So students are able to have their preferred schedule in as many instances as possible. Um, that being said, some classes don't run, and there are some unavoidable conflicts, but the whole admin team is working very hard to make everyone happy. Um, we had an update on safety protocol guidelines, um, so the plexiglass was removed from the cafeteria. But the project room has remained open for lunch for students who want a less crowded space to eat. Uh, group work has started again, and students and staff seem much happier, and the administration hopes that the measures can remain lifted. The culture seems happier, and students seem to be engaging with everyone more, open windows and outdoor time with nicer weather helps too. Uh, Mr. Santry has seen maybe eight to ten percent of students still wearing masks and has not heard any reports of social discomfort. Uh, we had a brief update on the handbook committee that, um, they're going to be presenting to us on the fourth. Um, they are going to update the school improvement plans after the MCAS data comes in. And that was all we had. We will be meeting next on the twenty-eighth.
Alright, thank you very much, sounds busy.
Yes.
Um, next is capital planning, but I'm assuming that didn't meet.
We have not met.
Um, and wellness advisory?
We have not met.
Paccel?
No, we have not met. We're not meeting again until May twelfth.
Uh, the Municipal Building Design Committee?
Yes, we met Monday as well, um, over Zoom. We are not planning to meet over April vacation, that's, that would have been our typical meeting. So we're meeting May second in preparation for the town meeting update. Uh, this past meeting, we talked about, uh, space comparisons of what people are using right now for space and what. Was recommended in two thousand sixteen and then in twenty-twenty, um, and then looking at prioritization to. Just trying to find a way to kind of reduce costs, reduce space. Um, and still looking at the big picture of what are we gonna do with Ritter, what are we gonna do with Town Hall, and what are we gonna do with TCP? And again, finding ways to reduce costs. Um, are there other options for other? Uh, spaces where their pack could go in another building, um, classrooms, can they go into different spaces? Um. Michael Ray Jeffries is the chair. He was inquiring from the superintendent and wanted me to bring that to the superintendent about, um, identifying. Potential other locations, um, if TCP wasn't available for, say, extended day or. These early learning center, um, or the classroom type environments where if TCP was. Potentially just office space where it was the school offices and town offices. Um, what the superintendent would be doing with those classroom spaces. So, um, I think nothing's really been decided, but I think it's a lot of the brainstorming of where can we put different things and. Um, can we use the Ritter? Can we use Town Hall? Can we use our schools as an option, not ideal, but are those options and what can we do? So, that's what we left.
Alright, thank you very much. Um. Lifelong Learning Committee?
We have not met.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee?
We have not met.
Um, MASC Workshop Report? Um, there is a workshop on Friday. Establishing legislative priorities and goals, so I thought I would listen in on that and see what that is about because. Um, you know, we do, we had been talking about particularly with the chapter seventy stuff, having a better. Way to get to the legislators on some things, um, to see what they find legislative priorities and goals are. So that's on Friday, so I thought I would listen into that, and then the annual day on the hill is, um, April fourteenth. I haven't gone to that before, and it is on Zoom, so I thought I would check that out. So, that's what's going on there. I don't know if anybody else has seen anything or done anything else with that. Okay. Um, topics for future discussion, we have engaging parents, we have, um, THES. We want to get back to the insecticide people. And, um, we need to put on the third reading of the facility policy because that was. So that needs to go on there. Is there anything else?
Equity?
Uh, equity has to go on there, thank you. And while we're talking about future meetings, um, Laura had mentioned to me that she is unavailable on May fourth. I am unavailable till later. I, I definitely can't make, make the beginning of that meeting. Um, are we gonna have enough people for a quorum that night? Or should we reschedule, or today I spoke with Dr. Burn, Burnham, she thought maybe we might be able to skip that one. So, any thoughts? Will there be a quorum that night, I guess is the first question.
I will be there and can share if needed.
Okay, Ms. Shapiro, you will be there?
Yeah, I'll be there.
And Mr. School and Brini?
I'll be there.
Alright, so we do have a quorum, so we'll leave that date in place unless the superintendent feels she can. Jimmy things around, so we don't need to meet?
I know that we can.
Or it takes sense to do so.
Um, I think that there was a. One topic. Originally, we had thought that we would talk about the communications survey results. Um, and we had thought that, um, we would be looking at, um. Handbooks. However, um. You know, those, those can certainly be either, if one or the other can be moved up to the twenty-seventh. Uh, I think the handbooks really need to be, if, if not on the fourth, they'd have to be pushed back. Um, one more meeting because I think it's a too, too tight a crunch to turn around to have them. Um, final draft and ready for, um, the school committee on the twenty-seventh.
Well, it's doable. It's doable, but if it's gonna make the other meetings too long, I mean, certainly. Uh, if I can't be at the meeting and Laura can't be at the meeting, uh, we have three more people that can be at the meeting.
Yeah, we can do a minimal agenda too, like we are having a meeting on the week before on April twenty-seventh, so I don't see it being a long agenda. Or needing to be a long agenda.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, we can go with that then. So, is there anything else from anyone? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Layton?
Make a motion to adjourn at nine oh four PM.
And a second, Mrs. Kelly?
I'll second that motion.
Alrighty, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
This is Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Alright. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.